And then we have one, two, three, four public hearings, five, six, excuse me, public hearings for National Grid. The first one will commence at 6:35 and will involve, oh, strike that. The first one is regarding the right of first refusal arising from the notice of intent to sell, delivered to the town concerning land at 38 and 40 Hamilton Road, Sturbridge, Mass. The second one is a National Grid hearing regarding installation of one JO pole on Haynes Road, beginning at a point approximately 2,100 feet south of the center line intersection of Lead Mine Road and continuing approximately 30 feet. And then we have another, at 6:40, we have another National Grid hearing for installation of a JO pole on New Boston Road, beginning at a point approximately 800 feet north of the center line intersection of Old Hamilton Road and continuing approximately 20 feet in an east direction. And then another National Grid hearing at 6:40 for the installation of one JO pole on Whittmore Road, beginning at a point of approximately 150 feet west of the center line or the intersection of Fisk Hill Road and continuing approximately 20 feet in the north direction. Then we have another National Grid hearing at 6:45 regarding the installation of a JO pole on Fisk Hill Road, beginning at a point approximately 470 feet north of the center line on the intersection of Main Street and continuing approximately 20 feet in an eastern direction. Then we have notification about an application by Mama Italia LLC, DBA, Mama Italia Restaurante, for a new liquor license at the premises currently located at 139 Main Street, Suite 2, Sturbridge, Mass., 01566. Then we'll move on to the town administrator update and then action items, which include consideration and possible action to accept the letter of resignation from Michael Jelineus from full-time firefighter effective April 11, 2024, to part-time firefighter. And then consideration and possible action to accept the letter of resignation from Kyle St. Marie from the Department of Public Works, effective April 5, 2024. And we have consideration and possible action on a one-day liquor license for Michael Placella and Tuti Quante for April 26, 2024, Pickleball U, located at 178 Main Street, so 178 C, Main Street. Consideration and possible action on a transient vendor application for James and Jean Mountain, New England Antique Arms Society, for June 7, 2024, and June 8, 2024, at The Host. And then we have consideration and possible action for one-day liquor license application for JT Ethier and Greater Good for April 27 for the town common bonfire. And then consideration and possible action to authorize the chair to execute the agreement professional service with hair corporation for warrant analysis at Main Street, Route 20, Arnold Road intersection. And we have consideration and possible action to rescind the vote to which authorized Edward J. Collins Jr., Center for Public Management, in the amount of $31,500. Consideration and possible action authorize the chair to execute the agreement for self-evaluation and transition plan with Capital Strategic Solutions in the amount of $30,500. Then consideration and possible action to confirm the appointment of Emily Clam to the Old Sturbridge Village, has the Old Sturbridge Village representative to the Sturbridge Tours Association. And then consideration and possible action to reopen the annual town meeting warrant. Consideration and possible action to close the annual town meeting warrant. Old business, which includes budget discussions and votes may be taken. New business, correspondence, approval of minutes, citizens forum, and then adjourn. So with that, would everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, omnipotent, and just as for all.
With that, I just would like to take a moment of silence for the unrest in the Middle East and Europe and abroad. Please just lower your heads. Okay, public service announcements. Mary Blanchard.
None, thank you.
Chase?
I have not. I'd just like to thank everybody that came out and voted in the local town election. So thank you all for your involvement.
Mary Lou?
Yes, the Friends of the Sturbridge Trails is hosting a Earth Day Trail cleanup this Saturday from 8 to 12, 52 Stallion Hill Road. They're asking any volunteers to bring work gloves and water bottles. They have many projects planned, so if you can help out for an hour or two or four, feel free. And the second one was that the town bonfire will be April 27 from 5 to 9 on the Common, and there'll be live music and vendors.
Great. And I would also just like to congratulate Mary Dowling on running the marathon yesterday.
Oh, really? I didn't know that.
That's why I don't think we've seen her.
That's a good excuse.
Okay, with that, word to reorganization of the board. Mary reached out. She said she didn't care if we went forward or not, but it's up to you guys. You want to wait for her or...
I don't know. We've always waited.
Yeah. It's always a full board.
It's mad earth-shattering.
I agree. All right, so we will hold on that until the next meeting, Michelle. All right, is it 6:36? So Chase, would you mind calling the first public hearing?
You've got it. The Board of Selectment of the Town of Sturbridge will be holding a public hearing on Tuesday, April 16, 2024, at 6:35 PM for the consideration of the right of first refusal arising from the notice of intent to sell, delivered to the town concerning the land at 38 and 40 Hamilton Road, Sturbridge, Mass., 01566, classified for tax purposes under GLC 61 and C 61A. The public hearing will take place at Sturbridge Town Hall, second floor Veterans Memorial Hall, located at 308 Main Street, Sturbridge, Mass., 01566.
Okay. Do we have anybody here?
I just have.
Oh, so good.
I just have a question. I know once it's been done that we've had a public hearing, but we don't normally have public hearings for right of first refusal because it's basically for the town's interest, to see if the town has any interest in it.
Yeah, we took a vote on interest, and then once you have interests, you have a hearing on it, right?
Yeah. We have to buy, it's actually in the bylaw, I believe, that we're supposed to.
Which bylaw?
Is it the bylaw or the charter? Where do we find it?
I forget now, but I know that it says on here too.
Yeah, we found this in the, I don't know if it came from the public registry, but we found something that indicated that we needed to or we're supposed to have.
Well, if you find it, cry a bit of coffee.
I'll find it to you because we looked at it twice and we, I think we even reached out to council on that to confirm.
Yeah, on all of them.
I believe so.
Oh, because we've never done it.
Yeah, well, it's posted and we're here, so. Did you want to come?
I can give you just a brief.
I really wasn't sure what it was about.
Oh, okay.
So do you want me to just give a brief event?
Yeah, please, yeah.
So when a property is put into chapter land for protection, either for farming or forestry, if the person wants to sell that property and has a purchase and sales agreement in place, we don't look at it until that point happens and have a price set. If that land has been protected, let's say, and tax-protected, we as a town have the right of first refusal at that agreed-upon price for the property. What happens is any town department or commission that has an interest, so Conservation Commission would review it, Planning would review it, who else did we send it out to? I'm trying to remember. Open Space looked at it and the Board of Selectment review it, to decide if it's a property the town wants to purchase, and then we would move forward. In this case, the town reviewed it. None of those groups felt that there was a reason for the town to purchase it. So what this basically means is the town is not going to exercise its right of first refusal to buy it, let, allow it, freeing it up for that sale to happen. That sale happens is a private party sale. They still have to comply with all zoning regulations and everything else, and then they have to pay to get it out of that taxed land. There's a payback, if you will. There's a cost to the buyer to sort of repay what wasn't paid when it was protected land under either farming or forestry, depending on how it was protected. It doesn't change what the, in that case, it was protected from usage. They weren't paying taxes. It frees it up back to what its original zoning would have been, if you will.
Okay. And so in this instance, nobody was in favor of us exercising our right?
None of the town groups were in favor of it in this particular property.
Okay, anything from the board on it?
Nothing for me.
Okay. Anything from the town is a public meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so then we need a motion to close the public.
I do want to confirm that anything that's done on that land goes through normal town protocols. It goes through planning. It goes through conservation, so it doesn't...
It's wetland.
Anything that's wet would be considered in any plans that get done as if that property had never been in chapter land or whatever else. It's this, they still have to comply, and in fact, I believe they have already spoken with planning. The potential buyer has already spoken with planning and is in proper process, and I think one of the neighbors actually went over and spoke with our departments on that. But it will go through all processes and all requirements. It doesn't change that.
So do we still get notices?
You'll get a butter notices if there are changes. If there's any special use or anything like that, you would get a butter notices. So it falls just like any other property now.
Okay. So, and I appreciate the engagement, but just for the rest of the meeting, guys, we're not going to do call and response. If you have something to say, you got to come up to the mic and just identify yourself and where you live, that's all. No big deal. Okay, so do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? The ayes have it. All right, do we have a motion on the merits?
Okay, I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen does not exercise their right of first refusal.
Okay, do I have a second?
I will second that.
All those in favor? The ayes have it. Okay, so we are moving now to the 6:35 National Grid hearing. Chase, would you please read that in?
National Grid has made a petition to the Sturbridge Board of Selectmen to install one JO pole on Haynes Street, beginning at a point approximately 2,150 feet south of the center line of the intersection of Lead Mine Road and continuing approximately 30 feet in a west direction. National Grid also requests permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires in the above or intersecting public ways. The pole hearing will take place on Tuesday, April 16, 2024, at 6:35 PM at the Sturbridge Town Hall, second floor Veterans Memorial Hall, located at 308 Main Street, Sturbridge, Mass., 01566.
All right, you just want to come down and just identify yourself for the folks in the audience?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lee Shu. I'm representing National Grid tonight. So the reason for the installation of this pole is just for pretty much ease of access. It's going to be a lot easier for the resident to hook up power this way. That way, if the pole wasn't there, then it'd be a lot harder with the angles and the house, how the houses. So this is our final plan.
So why would it be, why is it going to make it easier?
Essentially, the way the angles work, if we were to run the wire from, so we don't really do midspan taps just off the wire anymore. We try to go from pole to house. And if that's the case, the way that the meter's located, the way the point of attachment's located, there's actually a lot of rules on our end, such as maintaining three feet from window. So things like this kind of requires a new pole.
Okay. Questions from the board?
You may. So this is basically to service those new houses that are built on 15.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay. Mary Lou, anything?
No.
All right, from the public, any questions, comments concerned? Come on up and just identify yourself at the...
Tom Thamer, I live at 566 Haynes Street. Just curious as to will a pole be eliminated or is that just going in just for the new properties that are going up there?
Yes, so...
Or additional properties?
So it kind of accounts for everything. We wouldn't remove the pole just because the poles already have attachments on there as well as underground wires and everything, so it would actually be a really big hassle on everyone if we were to move the poles around. It'd be a pretty big job. This way, if we install the pole, not only does it service the new property, but also properties in the future. And it's going to be a brand-new pole, obviously, so it'll be well at the standard.
This will be for the house that's already built?
Yes, correct, for the time being.
That's it.
For the time being, correct.
Okay.
So just to clarify, in the future, any residents or any customers who need the power, we could definitely hook them up from this pole. It would just make it easier for everyone.
Okay. Okay. Anything else from the public? Okay, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? The ayes have it. All right, do we have a motion on the installation of the pole itself?
I'll make a motion to approve the pole installed at Haynes Street, beginning at a point approximately 2,150 feet south of the center line of the intersection of Lead Mine Road and continuing approximately 30 feet in the west direction.
A second. And then also, I think, just to request permission to lay and maintain underground wires alongside that. Okay, all those in favor? Great. Okay, we are moving to the 6:40 National Grid hearing. Chase, could you please read this one in?
You've got it. National Grid has made a petition to the Sturbridge Board of Selectmen to install one JO pole on New Boston Road, beginning at a point approximately 800 feet north of the center line of the intersection of Old Hamilton Road and continuing approximately 20 feet in the east direction. National Grid also requests permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires in the above or intersecting public ways. The pole hearing will take place on Tuesday, April 16, 2024, at 6:40 PM at the Town of Stur, at the Sturbridge Town Hall, second floor Veterans Memorial Hall, located at 308 Main Street, Sturbridge, Mass., 01566.
Okay, so we are now on to New Boston Road at a point of approximately 800 feet north of the center line of Old Hamilton Road. So what's going on with this project?
Sure. So this one is very similar in nature, just the pole to feed a resident. And the reason for this one specifically is because currently the meter can't sit on the right side of the house just due to, you know, accessible roofs and windows and such. So in that case, the only possible way is to do on the other side of the house. And in order to do that, a new pole must be installed, just because the current poles are actually on the other side of the street. And on top of that, we need to maintain a 17 and 1/2-foot clearance just so trucks and, you know, large vehicles can pass through without ripping out the wire. So this is just the best way, in our opinion.
Okay. Questions from the board? Questions from the public?
Hi, Michelle Scholl, 208 New Boston Road. Can you tell me the exact location of that pole?
I have a sketch right here, but it's going to be, it's going to be in the middle between 204 and 208 on the right of way.
So the problem that I have with that, I am at 208 New Boston Road. My driveway sits a little lower down, so any obstruction there is going to interfere with my sight pulling out of my driveway. If there's just a little snow in the winter time, then it obstructs it so that I can't see the cars coming. That is right after what I call the S-curves. That speed is 30 miles an hour. I can tell you that nobody goes 30 miles an hour. They're going past there about 50 miles an hour. You know, I've asked the police to, you know, be on that road, and they are, you know. Also, a few years back, my daughter was pulling out of the driveway, and she got her nose taken off of the car because you can't see. So I don't understand why that pole is going exactly in that location. Not only that, there's nothing but ledge there. I mean, you can see the stones sticking up from the ground. So what is the exact purpose of that? They want to do underground the house 204 or...
Correct.
So why isn't it on her property on the other side of the driveway where it would, could be set back a little further so that my line of sight wouldn't be interfered with? It's a dangerous section of New Boston Road.
I understand, ma'am. So this isn't my design. I'm just here to represent this job, but I could definitely look into moving the stake or the paint personally. Like I said, I haven't been out to this site, so I can't tell you exactly where it's going to go. And matter of fact, if there is ledge, which again, I'm not too sure, I'd have to go see. But the lineman who installed it obviously wouldn't just drill through the ledge. It's kind of impossible, so they would have to find an alternate location. So if there is ledge, I could tell you right now, it's not going, it's not going there. But there is probably a stake markings there already, maybe paint or a stake.
Right, so I don't understand if it's for her, for her to go underground, then why is it on my property?
Well, let's just, let's, so let's step back from the call and response a minute. So, but if I'm understanding this correctly, you're saying that the pole is going to be to the left side of your driveway as you pull, come out of it, and you come down from a dip? Was that the...
So my land kind of goes like this, and then it's on a decline, so my driveway is here.
Gotcha.
So I look to see where they put their stake.
Yeah.
And, you know, especially tonight, pulling out. If that's there, I can't see.
Yeah.
October of this year, somebody coming up New Boston Road hit my telephone pole and the neighbor's telephone pole and wiped that out. That just goes to show you what's going on in that. So as far as being obstructed, there's two other poles, so there's like a pole here, a pole here, and then they're placing this one on the opposite side where the other ones are. So why can't you...
No, no, it's a very sensible question. Well, what is the board's prerogative on it?
Well, are you saying there's no stake there, so you don't know exactly where it's going?
There is a stake there, so, and that's kind of what I looked at when I pulled out of my driveway today, is if that pole is going where that is, then I either have to pull out more and take the chance of getting clipped, or, I mean, I don't know. I pull, you know, I pull into my driveway, but I back out, you know, in my property and then pull out straight. And by doing that, I still have that obstruction.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I think if it was moved further on the other side of 204, is she 204?
Yes.
You know, and maybe back a little, it wouldn't be as bad for me, you know, pulling out.
So as you're saying, as long as if there's a way to move it down the street, that eat every, whatever span you move down the street, you're making it safer because your line of sight's better.
Correct.
Okay. Mary Lou, Chase, anything?
I'm familiar with your driveway and where it's definitely, it's definitely a concern. Yeah, it's definitely a concern, and I don't know going forward how we could, I mean, would Heather be able to meet National Grid out there and take a look or...
I mean, listen, if it's...
No, I was just going to say I wouldn't be adverse to waiting so that she can get together with National Grid.
Yeah, that's where I was going to.
And see if...
Yeah, you don't want to, if there's, especially, well, one, if it's going to, if it's going to hit ledge anyways, National Grid's not going to want to waste their time by going and just hitting ledge. Second of all...
I'm surprised they got the stake in there to begin with, honest, to be honest with you. Because like I said, when I mow, I have to go around a large rock.
Yeah.
And I mean, it's still at a little above-ground level, but it's very visible, so I'm saying, oh my God, what are they going to do? Are they going to, you know, have to blast? And I have a brick house and, you know, let's go with, let's go on.
And they're going to blow it down.
Yeah.
All right, so I think that, well, we have to vote to close the public hearing, so before, is there anybody else that wants to comment on this? Come on up.
David Sprague, I live at 203 New Boston Road, which is across from 204, obviously. That pole would be quite an obstruction for the person who lives at 204, when she pulls out of her driveway. That's an extremely fast section of road, unfortunately. Will there be any wires that go, I'm on the side of the road that the power is on, any wires that are going to go across New Boston Road to connect with that?
Yes, sir.
Well, that's quite a myriad of wires. We have, that'll make a triangle of telephone poles, as she described, and that triangle is going to be at the end of my driveway. I have a pole on my property line, and we're only three houses apart. There's two, there's two power poles, and this one is going to be across the street. There's going to be a myriad of wires. I have two or three massive oak trees in my front yard, which they just trimmed today, which is definitely going to be a problem for wires that go across the road as well. There's trees on the property at 204, which also enter into that situation. Any, will any other underground wires be taken from that pole to go anywhere else or strictly to that, that one house?
So apparently, because 204 called it in, it's currently only going to their house, but in the future, definitely, again, the pole would definitely be opened up for public use, so anyone would be able to run underground or overhead from that pole.
Okay, you know, obviously, I don't know how long that installation would take and what kind of work is going to be involved, but trucks, noise, clutter, there's enough of it going on there. We have gravel trucks that run down the road constantly. We have trailer trucks that have the equipment that use that road. It's quite busy. It's our own section of the Bass Bike, really. That pole not only will be the myriad of wires and a triangle of poles, the poles are an eyesore, and I have yet to see National Grid take care of any of the property around those poles. So in other words, whatever weeds, debris, et cetera, that grow around that pole, the property owner must take care of, or it's going to look pretty disgusting. I've got a pole on my property line. The years, National Grid has never, ever looked at it.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you. Yeah, sure.
So there's already lines going across to that, and we're putting this pole in because she wants them underground?
Yes, that's correct. We wouldn't be, we wouldn't dig across the public right of way or the road if possible.
So why couldn't you go from the pole that her wires are coming from and go directly across? I mean, is it because of trees and she doesn't want to cut down trees or...
So I'm not too clear on this job myself. I haven't even talked to the owner, but typically in order...
Her electricity is on the other side of the house, so from the pole, her electricity is on the right side of her house, and you want to put the pole on the left side of the house. So I mean, why are we changing that?
I have it here as the pole's in the middle. If we're standing facing the road, it would be on the right side of the house as well.
I don't think he's going to be able to have the answers for you just because it's, he's here as a representative of the company, not the individual project rep. So unless, so unless there's anything else on it, I think we're going to close the public hearing. Anybody else in the audience? Okay, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor? The ayes have it. Okay, I don't think this project's ready for primetime.
Yeah.
So I guess myself, I would take no vote and ask that the National Grid reevaluate this project to see, because principally the safety issue being the major one, because if you're blocking views, not you, but the, you know, the obstructing views, they could kill somebody, and then there are the aesthetic sort of points of, you know, a triangle.
Yeah, I would ask if the board, if the National Grid could meet with our DPW director out there and kind of take a look at it.
Pities.
Yeah.
It's not a problem. Thank you so much.
No, thank you. All right, so moving on to the next National Grid, Chase, would you read it in the 6:40?
Yes. National Grid has made a petition to the Sturbridge Board of Selectmen to install one JO pole on Fisk Hill Road, beginning at approximately 470 feet north of the center line of the intersection of Main Street and continuing approximately 20 feet in an eastern direction. Install 150 Class H1 pole to support a recloser device for circuit protection. National Grid also requests permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires in the above or intersection public ways. The pole hearing will take place on Tuesday, April 16, 2024, at 6:45 PM at the Sturbridge Town Hall, second floor Veterans Memorial Hall, located at 308 Main Street, Sturbridge, Mass., 01566.
Great. Okay, so what's going on here with this one?
Sure. So again, it's going to be installation of a new pole. The reason being, it's going to be very different. So this pole is actually going to have a recloser on it, which is essentially a pretty big metal device. And the benefit of a recloser is that it can automatically detect faults and any issues, so we don't even need to, as long as we program it right, it could definitely, in the case of a big storm, it could definitely just figure out faults by itself and potentially close back the loop, and everyone has power. and potentially close back the loop and everyone has power again, maybe after a few seconds, a few minutes. Uh, instead of, you know, waiting a couple hours for alignment to get out there, cause it's so busy and dangerous. So, uh, I think this intersection and everything alongside it, all the properties, uh, it's pretty concerning for us. You know, it's obviously a lot of residents and, uh, it's also been an area concern for us, uh, in the past as well, uh, during the storm. So this is just a protection device to help everyone else out.
Okay. Um, questions, comments from the board? Oh, wait, hold on a second. Excuse me. We wait first over the board and then.
No, it, um, doesn't seem to be interfering with any property. Put into the map.
Yeah, no, it seemed to make sense to me. Chase, Mary Lou, anything on it? All right. Can you just please come up and add here?
This is in regards to the pole on Fisk Hill Road?
Correct.
What I want to know, first of all, uh, so just one of the comments is one of those poles is going up directly in front of my house. And so I just wanna know, um, if that, I wanna verify that these poles don't have anything to do with the development that's going on in the woods behind my house.
We appreciate that, but can you just identify yourself for the record?
Oh, sure. I'm sorry. My name is Antonia Squire. I live at 8 Fisk Hill Road.
Perfect. Sorry about that.
Sorry about that.
No, no worries. It's understandable. Um, okay. So do you have any sense of where this is located?
Uh, I'm sorry, I'm not too familiar with the area, but if it is nearby and it's a new development, uh, going on, uh, obviously they would definitely need power. Typically developments will force them underground nowadays just because of the high loads. Uh, so I'm not too sure on, on, on that job. I don't think it's on any, anything I have on today. Uh, but eventually, yes, they would have to be connected to the.
I realize that. They have a road actually going into their property and I just wanted to verify that you're not planning on like putting, somehow putting lines between our properties and that one.
Uh, so I'm not too familiar with, with, with the property lines and everything, but if we were to install, uh, like I said, I'm pretty sure they would go underground at this point. But if they were to install poles, it would definitely be on their side of the property and not.
So, but the question is, but there would be no connection coming from the road at that point to the development behind it? Like, is that, you're basically wondering if you're gonna be in.
Yeah, I just wanted to know if they're only trying to figure out a shortcut from my house to the development. I don't want that myself.
So we, we, there would be no way for us to install any sort of, you know, overhead underground, any sort of equipment without any.
Right, great.
So if it does, if that is their, their, uh, I don't know, their design plan, then you definitely get contacted and you have obviously the right to refuse that.
All right. Great, great. And then, um, the other question is there's no, uh, danger to, I mean, like from the electricity or anything, not gonna be any additional danger to anybody in the area?
No, so, uh, this is actually gonna, gonna help, help it out quite a lot, actually. So the issue, danger shouldn't be an issue here.
All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else, uh, from the public on that? Anybody else? All right. Uh, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Uh, do we have a second?
A second.
All right. Uh, does anybody wanna make a motion on the merits?
You have to take a vote. You have to take a vote.
Yeah.
What's up?
You didn't, you didn't say all in favor.
Oh, I didn't say all in favor. All in favor? Sorry. Thanks, Mary Lou. Um, okay. Any, uh, decision on the merits?
I'll make a motion to approve the one JO pole on Fisk Hill Road, beginning at a point approximately 470 feet north of the center line of the intersection of Main Street and continuing approximately 20 feet in the eastern direction. The installation of 150 H class H1 pole to support a recloser device for circuit protection. And National Grid also requests permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables and wires.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? The ayes have it. I think we went to the 645.
I made a mistake. We skipped on, but we're gonna go back now.
It was obviously my mistake.
You didn't catch me.
All right. Go 640, Chase.
All right. National Grid has made a petition to the Sturridge Board of Selectment. Install one JO pole on Whittmore Road, beginning at a point approximately 150 feet west of the center line of the intersection of Fisk Hill Road and continuing approximately 20 feet in a north direction. Install 150 class H1 pole to support a load break and fuse device for circuit protection. National Grid also requests permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables and wires in the above or intersection, intersecting public ways. The poll hearing will take place Tuesday, April 16th, 2024 at 6:40 PM at the Sturridge Town Hall, second floor Veterans Memorial Hall, located at 308 Main Street, Sturridge, Mass. 01566.
Thanks, Chase. Okay. So we are, so this is the install one pole in Whittmore Road at a point approximately 150 feet west of the center line of the intersection of Fisk Hill Road. So what's going on here?
Sure. So this is, uh, similar in the sense that it's another protection device, but this time it's a load brake, uh, so a load brake switch. It's a little bit different than a recloser. It's not 100% automatic all the time. And this actually, uh, is in conjunction with the recloser. So if both are installed, uh, the load brake would take it first, maybe the fuse is real pop and things like that to replace, to protect the recloser. Uh, and as for the underground facilities, we're, uh, just trying to clean up some of our underground wires. A lot of the stuff in there is pretty old, especially near that intersection of Main Street. So if we're able to kinda clean it up underground, uh, and also just install new, new ducts for the commercial property that, that needs power. And that also will be protected by the, the load brake if, uh, which would be pole 3-50.
Okay. Um, any comments, questions from the public? Going once, going twice. While you don't have anything? All right. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
All right. Do we have a second?
Sorry.
All those in favor? Great. All right. Um, so do we have a motion on the merits?
I'll make a motion to approve the one JO pole on Whittmore Road, beginning at a point approximately 150 feet west of the center line of the intersection of Fisk Hill Road and continuing approximately 20 feet in a north direction. The installation of 150 class H1 pole to support a load break and fuse device for circuit protection. National Grid also requests permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables and while, wires in the above or intersecting public ways.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? The ayes have it. All right. Thank you. I think that's everything for you tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
All right. So we're moving on to Mama Italia.
You got it. Notification is hereby given that an application has been filed by Mama Italia LLC, DBA Mama Italia Restaurante for a new liquor license at the premises located at 139 Main Street, Suite 2, Sturridge, Mass. 01566, with the Sturridge Board of Selectment. In accordance, in accordance with MGL CH 138, a public hearing will be held on Tuesday, April 16th, 2024 at 6:45 PM. This hearing will be held at Veterans Memorial Hall, Sturridge Town Hall, 308 Main Street, Sturridge, Mass. 01566.
All right. Uh, can you guys please identify yourselves?
Michael Modetti.
Kathy Baldieri.
Guys, can you just keep it down a bit? I'm sorry. Um, the, all right. So you, so what's going on?
Go ahead. Speak in English.
We apply for an application for a liquor license.
Okay. All right. Questions from the board?
Um, you talking full liquor license?
Yes. But actually we'll probably only serve beer and wine.
You can't have an Italian restaurant that doesn't serve wine. Can't.
Well, it's been BYOB, so.
All right. Um, so, um, well, first, is there any questions, comments from the crowd? Please identify yourself.
Dave Marlin, I live at 145 Main Street, which is behind them. Concerns I have is, uh, one, are they gonna be selling, um, those containers to the public?
No.
Gah, hold on. Cause between Shepherd, Shepherd Road and their place of business, it's a complete dump of just alcohol bottles of all sizes, not just nips. Nips is a huge thing. We're talking full-size wine bottles, we're talking beer bottles, cans, and I have a big rock at the end of my driveway. I would love to put my address back on there, but for some reason, people feel that it's a need to target that with glass bottles. I have two five-year-old twin boys that live at the house. I have to watch out for that. And I've made a complaint to the Highway Department of, I guess it's the state that takes care of that section. I just said, you know, it's starting to look pretty nasty up there. Could come take care of it. All they did was cut the brush and they put a pile at the end of my driveway.
Okay, so.
Pushed it back down the street for them so that they could see that that was not what I wanted. On the other side of the road is just as bad. But if you go up through there now, you see a bunch of, uh, styrofoam, uh, white styrofoam. It's, uh, sheathing of, you know, they use it to wrap up stuff, but it's all through there. But that whole section through there is just littered with alcohol bottles of all sorts and cans.
How long's that been going on?
Ever since I've been there for four years.
Four years. And so you guys have only been in business there for.
Yeah, they've only been in business there.
That's true. Last summer.
So the thing is, is that you really don't notice it because fall happens. Like it covers up with leaves. You don't notice it. But if you get down there, it's just, it's just consistent.
Yeah. So, no, we appreciate the comment. I, I would suspect, and I don't know, that that, some of that sounds like it's coming from cars, not.
It is. It is coming from cars, but that's what, that's what my point is getting. We are, uh, there's already enough problems of people littering of all that stuff from every other place. This would just be another place if they sold, you know, just like to the public.
But yeah, so I don't.
If they're doing it for service, then yeah, all good and all stuff like that, you know, it's.
But I think, I think it's just for service.
Uncriminally.
Yeah. And that's, and, uh, and you know, and good luck to you guys and everything. But that's just, that's my only concern is just about the littering of all the.
Thank you. We, we appreciate it. Um, okay. So, um, okay, with, Robin, is there anything in the license? It seemed pretty straightforward to me to every, the, we have all the requisite sign-offs?
Everything was signed off on.
Okay.
Okay. Who's going to be manager? Also, um, on page two of the application, it says, has any individual listed in question six? And applicable attachments ever been convicted of a state, federal or military crime? If yes, attach an affidavit providing the details of any and all convictions. And you marked yes.
He did provide it. I left it out for the meeting. I can send it to you later, but I called the Mississippi State office to release that. I didn't know if I was able to in public hearing.
Oh, but, well.
I do have it. Do you want me to print it out? Was it a public record?
Yeah, it would be.
No, we appreciate your sensitivity and we're not trying to.
Bag you or anything.
Be difficult or anything like that.
Sometimes people check things off and they.
Amitadha, what can you do?
No, it's just, it's, it's, it's for completeness. That's all.
Yeah, no problem.
Love the restaurant. My two boys, it's their favorite spot. They go, they won't be drinking, but.
They're a little young for that.
I said, they won't be drinking.
And actually with it not being the wise, they sat at table three.
Yeah, I don't think that's related. All right. Well, in the meantime, anything else on the license?
I have no problem with it.
I have no problem with it, yeah.
Nope. Just always see the little things.
No, that's, that's a real thing.
Yeah, I mean, well, you never know.
Michelle's questions on the public record versus.
Oh, no, understandably, understandably.
I can tell you what it is if you want to know.
I think we just need to see the paper, honestly. I don't think, and it isn't, it's not really about what.
It's not in, uh, it's not in a.
No, it's not, it's not.
Big deal.
No, and I don't think we expect it to be. It's just making sure that we look at the form before we.
No problem.
Cause this is a technically a full liquor license, even though I know that's not the direction you guys are going. So we just like to be announce of prevention, you know? Hmm, dead air, huh?
I'm gonna do my, my update in the meantime.
Um, no, let's just go.
We're in the middle of an open public hearing, so we can't do that yet.
Personal on hold for a minute.
Thank you.
No, we see that. We're not gonna come to eat no more.
No, don't worry.
I'm fine.
Yeah, we're fine as well. Anything, Mary Lou, Chase? Um, anything from the public? And all right, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Um, all those in favor? Great. All right. Do we have a motion on the license?
Okay, I'll make a motion. The board grants a full liquor license to Mama Italia LLC, 139 Main Street, Suite 2, Sturridge, Mass.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? The ayes have it. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing business in town too.
Ciao. You're the only one with Italian last night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Town administrator update. Robin?
Very briefly, um, Heather and I just continue to meet with the Commonwealth to discuss possible options with Walker Pond. We, uh, that's just an ongoing issue. Just wanted to let people know it's not off our radar. We meet with the Commonwealth on it. They're looking at different design plans. It, we haven't even gotten to the point of funding sources or anything like that, but just want people to know we are still looking at it. Uh, we also, Heather and I will be meeting April 22nd here at 5:30 with residents from Camp Road. They've asked to have a neighborhood meeting to just discuss their road and private roads and all things such. The Lake Street residents that will not be May 6th, they cannot make that night. We're looking for an alternative night. I will be meeting with them. Is it Lake Street or Road? I probably have it wrong, cause I always get it backwards. Um, the town will have representations here. They're looking, if you recall, the neighbors had come, they wanted to install a gate. Uh, we are not, this, I just wanna be very clear. We are not authorizing the installation of a gate. We don't authorize anything on a private road. What we have confirmed is legally, as long as people can drive up to that gate and turn around, they have the right to block the through access, um, provided that emergency vehicles would have a FOB or a way to get through. So that's what we are working on. The neighbors on, uh, Old Town are meeting with us as well. They are aware of it. Uh, we have indicated to them that the emergency services would have access through to get through, but we are going to host a meeting for anybody interested or concerned. But I wanna be clear, cause I had somebody not from the neighborhood who was questioning having that sort of not a cut through anymore. And again, we indicated it is a private road and we are not installing the gate. We just simply confirmed that legally they could do that and we would still plow the road. And National Grid, speaking of National Grid, on May 9th at 1 o'clock, uh, representatives from National Grid, Tony Crane, our tree warden. Heather, I believe, will be there and, uh, Conservation will be there to meet with Grid on the, uh, the whole issue of podium. We are gonna look at all those pole locations and we also wanna look at those trees because they have a lot of trees with blue marks on them. I took a ride through. Um, there's some historic way, uh, beautification way type, uh, issues on that road. Uh, we wanna be very, very careful with what comes down. Uh, Tony really wants to be part of that as our tree warden. So we're very pleased. We will have a whole team from the town there in addition to National Grid. I've informed a couple of the neighbors that I had said I would stay in touch with. If anybody is watching on TV or listening, please pass that word along. I will also put it out on social media. So again, May 9th at 1 o'clock, we will have that meeting.
Okay. Um, all right. Questions for Robin?
Nope.
Thanks, Mary Lou. Okay, Robin, thank you. All right. We are now moving on to our action items. All right. Action item A, consideration and possible action to accept a letter of resignation from Michael Jalinas from full-time firefighter, effective April 11th, to part-time firefighter. I don't really know if that's a letter of resignation exactly.
We'll be keeping up more all sort of, yeah.
Transfer. Um, but yeah, so I, I, so basically he was just focusing on working, uh, as an electrician, but wants to pick up some shifts though.
Yes.
Any questions from the board?
Nope. Nope.
Glad to keep the, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept a letter of resignation as a full-time firefighter from firefighter, Michael Jalinas, and also his, grant his request to remain as a part-time firefighter. Second.
All those in favor? The ayes have it. Great, thank you. Uh, consideration and possible action to accept a letter of resignation from Kyle St. Marie, uh, from the Department of Public Works, effective April 5th, 2024. Comments, questions?
Um, has he been there long, Heather?
Nope.
Okay. But we're doing exit interviews.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Chase, Mary Lou? All right. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept a letter of resignation from Kyle St. Marie from the Department of Public Works, effective April 5th, 2024. from the Department of Public Works, effective April 5th, 2024.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Great, all those in favor? And thank you to him for his service. All right. Consideration and possible action on a one-day liquor license application for Michael Placella, Tudi Quanti, for April 26, 2024, at Pickleball U, located at 178 C Main Street, Sturbridge, from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Okay, so basically, Tudi Quanti is doing a wine tasting presumably?
It's a date night. It's a date.
Date, yeah.
That's even more romantic.
Be sure you go.
Wow, pickleball.
Any questions?
If you say that, your boy, he's catching up to us.
Any questions, comments from the board? All right, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the one-day liquor license application for Michael Placella, Tudi Quanti, for April 26, 2024, at Pickleball U, located at 178 C Main Street, Sturbridge, from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM.
Second.
Great, all those in favor? The ayes have it. All right, D, consideration and possible action on a transient vendor application for James and Jean Mountain, New England Antique Arms Society, for June 7th, 2024, and June 8th, 2024, from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM at the Sturbridge Host Hotel. All right. Seems pretty straightforward. Any questions, comments from the board?
Busy weekend. Isn't it graduation?
Busy, yeah.
Graduation.
Yep.
That was more of a comment, but any, anything else from the board on this?
Nope.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we grant the license to Historical Antique and Military Show under James and Jean Mountain, NEA AS Inc.
For June 7th and 8th.
For June 7th and 8th, 2024.
9:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
9 to 4.
I'll second that.
Great, all those in favor? Thank you. All right. Consideration and possible action on a one-day liquor license application for J.T. Ethier Greater Good, for April 27, 2024, and the Town Common for the Town Bonfire from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Any conversation on this?
Been done before.
Yeah. Any, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the one-day liquor license application for J.T. Ethier Greater Good, for April 27, 2024, and the Town Common for the Town Bonfire, from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great. All right, consideration and possible action to authorize the chair to execute the agreement for professional service with Pear Corporation for warrant analysis at Main Street, Route 20, Arnold Road intersection.
Yeah, a while back, a group of seniors who hung out at the senior center came to me with concerns about that intersection. And when a group of seniors come, you sit down and listen to them. And so they, they talked about some concerns about that intersection. I know in the past, it's been looked at for lights and some type of traffic control. Those, anybody who makes a left turn out of there knows it can be a little bit of a tricky left turn sometimes. So they just asked if we would take a look at it again. We had a little bit of ARPA money. ARPA voted it. You guys voted it a while back. We had had a preliminary proposal from Pear Corporation for that money. I emailed them. I said, "Was you still on to the price you had a couple of years back?" They said they would. And so this is basically just to get a study done to see if there is any merit. And we know that's a busy road coming out of there, and any chance we could take, get to take a look at it, we might as well, so.
What's the cost again?
10,000.
10,500, yeah.
Is there any way, because when the study was done years ago, they said that there wasn't enough traffic coming off of that road. However, a lot of the people off of Arnold Road go down Cooper Road, so they go down Cedar Street to come out at the light. Can they do the study on that intersection where Cooper Road is also?
I'll have them try to take that into consideration because that was one of the reasons for this is in this whole traffic question of traffic that goes through that neighborhood, that we really want to avoid sending traffic through neighborhoods. So yeah, I'll make sure that they know that this is part of the picture. We want to look at, if it's going to be a couple thousand more, I'll go back to ARPA. Or I have some actually special project money in my budget, that if it's going to be another $1,000 or $2,000, if the board wants to add a contingency, that if that's not included, and you want me to add a little bit of a review of Cooper and is part of that, if you just want to give me the authority to do that, you can. I can't imagine, if the whole study is going to be 10, I don't think it's going to be a whole lot more to incorporate that if they're not already taking that into consideration.
Because I think that's really important.
Does the rest of the board think that, just see if we can add that on, the process is?
I have no problem with it.
It makes sense. I guess the only, I mean, it would be caught in most instances, I guess, the people that you would be trying to capture, the people coming from Route 9 or Brookfield, and then cutting over on Cedar Street to over going on. Okay, yeah, that makes sense. Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize the chair to execute the agreement for professional service with Pear Corporation for warrant analysis at Main Street, Route 20, Arnold Road, and the intersection of Arnold and Cooper.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Robin, is this going to create any issues as framed, or do we need a?
No, no, because I have that fund available to me. If I have to add a couple thousand, I'll just inform the board that we do. We just, to me, I would see that as almost a change order on a contract.
Okay.
I think we're fine on that.
Any concerns from the board on that? Okay, great, do we, are all those in favor? The ayes have it. Great. Moving on to action item G, consideration and possible action to rescind the vote too much authorized at Edward J. Collins Jr. Center for Public Management in the amount of $31,500.
So we went forward with a Massachusetts Office of Disability Grant, which we received. Robin Schabatz wrote that for us in conjunction with the Collins Center. Our contact at the Collins Center left, and when he left, they lost their capacity to actually do the study he said they would do, that they helped us write the grant for. So then we had to look toward somebody else to do it. So you have a motion to rescind. We then got other quotes, and what we're proposing to you is what we have next.
Okay, that makes sense. Do we have a motion to rescind?
Okay, I'll make a motion that the board rescinds the vote to authorize the Edward J. Collins Jr. Center for Public Management in the amount of $31,500. Second.
Great, all those in favor? The ayes have it. Going to action item A, which, strike that H, which Robin just mentioned. So it's just the same thing.
Same thing, just to authorize the contract, right?
Okay, and it's a little cheaper, too.
Yeah.
Save a thousand dollars.
All right, do we have a motion on this?
I'll make a motion to authorize the chair to execute the agreement for self-evaluation and transition plan with Capital Strategic Solutions in the amount of $30,500.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great. All right. Okay, we are moving on to consideration, action item I, consideration and possible action to confirm the appointment of Emily Clam as the Old Sturridge Village representative to the Sturridge Tourist Association.
Well, we had a resignation from the person who was on there representing OSV, so this is OSV's appointment. Slot, I should say.
Okay, that makes sense. Do we have any questions, or do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to confirm the appointment of Emily Clam as the Old Sturridge Village rep for the Sturridge Tourist Association.
Second.
Great, all those in favor? And thank you to her for her help. All right, so we are on to consider, action item J, which is consideration, possible action to reopen the annual town meeting warrant. So we have.
So tonight, you would vote to open, and then while it is open, you can discuss all articles to, you voted to place before, so all the articles you voted to place, you could take a vote on tonight. I did put onto old business budget discussion, but that is also one of the articles, so it's sort of covered twice there.
Yeah.
But again, you're opening the warrant as a whole, and to look at each individual item for vote.
Okay. All makes sense to me.
Byron, Heather is here, obviously, and Shane for any questions on budget and warrants.
And while we keep wally around for security purposes.
Yeah, we keep wally hanging around. Yes, we have a member of the public here, so.
All right.
With any information on one of the articles, if there are questions.
I'll make a motion then to reopen the annual town meeting warrant.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
And as a reminder, you had voted to open and close the special. You voted on everything except the articles that didn't have final numbers on those, which were just placed. So the special is pretty much all set.
Okay, do we have the, is that?
That's not even here. I just, just as a side, if it comes up, we're all set on that.
Okay. Well, we can just look at that at the next meeting, maybe, just.
Confirm that.
Yeah. All right.
Hi, Byron.
Just, in the event you want to take any of these articles on a different night, just be aware that I believe we have to have this done before the next meeting. So we would have to have a special if there are articles we don't want to do tonight, just for your own understanding of the timeframe we're on.
All right, great. So I guess we'll just take them article by article and go from there? Or we can do comments and block vote, depends on the preference of the board.
Well, less confusing if we go article by article.
Yeah, I think you're probably right. All right, going to article one. Do you hear the reports of several boards and town officials and any other committee that may be ready? So basically, this is the town reports article. So we placed this already, correct?
Yes, all placed.
All placed, okay. Do we have any?
We can make a motion to support.
Place and support, yeah, that's what I was going to say. Do we have a motion, we have a motion to place and support, it sounds like? Do we have a second? Great, all those in favor? Great, all right, moving on to article two, Community Preservation Committee Report. I'll just read the summary. The Community Preservation Committee is required to submit a report to town meeting on the proposed use of CPA funding. The CPC report is an appendix to the Finance Committee report. Any comments on this, or do we have a motion?
Make a motion to support article two.
Second.
Great, all those in favor? The ayes have it. Article three, Community Preservation Administration Funds. The town will vote to appropriate $25,000 to be allocated for the purpose of operating and administrative expenses in FY 2020 for the Community Preservation Committee. Do we have any comment on this? Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to place and support.
All those in, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? The ayes have it. Article four, debt service on community preservation. This is $58,000 for the purpose of paying the debt service of OSV Land Acquisition, $37,100 for the purpose of paying debt service for the Heinz Farm Acquisition, $25,550 for the purpose of paying debt service for the Recreation Court Project, $89,650 for the purpose of Town Hall Center Office renovation project. Any comments on these? Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to place and support.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? The ayes have it. Article five, Community Preservation Grave Stone Reservation, which is $9,500 to, for the purpose of North Cemetery and Old Burial Ground Preservation Restoration Work. Do we have any common concerns about this? Do we have a motion?
Motion to place and support.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Moving to article six, Community Preservation General Trails Property Improvements, which is appropriating $6,000, $66,000 from the Community Preservation Fund Undesignated Fund Balance for the purpose of general trail improvement as presented to the Trails Committee. Do we have any comments, questions on this? No, do we have a motion?
Motion to place and support.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great. Article seven, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from the Community Preservation Fund Undesignated Fund Balance the sum of $550,000 for the purpose of construction of the Grand Trunk Trail. It says trial. Extension on One River Road and Nine River Road for the intersection of River Farquhar Road to Hayne Street. Do we have any comments, concerns about this? Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to place and support.
Second?
Second.
And all those in favor? The ayes have it. Moving to article eight, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from the Community Preservation Historic Fund Balance the sum of $60,000 for the purpose of continuing the town historic survey, including all costs incidental and related thereto. Do we have any questions or comments? No, do we have a motion?
Motion to place and support.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
We'll get those summary boxes, just waiting a penny for a few of those, I think.
Okay.
Do you have them?
Okay, and then we're moving to article nine, Community Preservation Housing. Will vote to appropriate from the Community Preservation Fund Community Housing Fund Balance the sum of $140,391 for the purpose of hiring a part-time housing coordinator, and associated administrative and legal costs. Do we have any questions, concerns about this? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to place and support article nine.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Ayes have it. Article 10, to see if the Community Preservation Riverlands OSV Easement Construction, to see if the town will vote to appropriate funds from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund Balance the sum of $33,000 for the purpose of construction of the GTT, this Grand Truck Trail, or, Drand Trump Trail, I can't talk, Riverlands OSV easement section. Do we have any questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
Motion to place and support.
All those in, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? The ayes have it. Article 11, Community Preservation Honor Roll and Civil War Memorial Plaque, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from the Community Preservation Fund Historic Fund Balance the sum of $1,500 for the purposes of purchasing a plaque for the newly renovated Civil War Memorial, including all costs incidental. Do we have any questions or concerns? Do we have a motion?
Motion to place and support.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great. Article 12, Community Preservation Gifford Road Milestone Restoration, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from the Community Preservation Fund Historic Fund Balance the sum of $1,500 for the balance of funding restoration of the Gifford Road Milestone, including all costs incidental. Any questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
Motion to place and support.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? The ayes have it. Community Preservation Lucy Danforth Coleman Sign Design and Purchase, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from the Community Preservation Fund Historic Fund Balance the sum of $2,700 for the purpose of funding the design and purchase of a sign recognizing Lucy Danforth Coleman to be placed on the town library grounds or adjacent to the old burial grounds. Questions or concerns?
Who is this person?
I don't know.
Well, I'm an expert.
Yeah, Raleigh, go ahead, tell the people.
I would have asked the same question a year ago.
My name is Raleigh Hershey, and I'm speaking as a private citizen tonight, not Historic Association or Society or the Historic Commission.
This is just your hobby night?
Mary let me out tonight. So during my due diligence, I do research for the soldiers on the memorial, on the monument out there. I found that there were three that were left off. During that time, I found also that we had a person born here in town. Her name was Lucy Danforth. She became Lucy Danforth Coleman. She did lose two husbands, but she became a sister with the abolitionists and with the women's rights people during the 19th century. Frederick Douglass was a very, very close friend of hers, and she was the person responsible for desegregating Richmond. There were Rochester, New York schools before the Civil War. She also, she had Frederick Douglass in her very tight, and Frederick Douglass also spoke at her daughter's funeral. They were very tight. She also became very good friends with Sojourner Truth, a former slave and a black abolitionist as well. And she arranged for her to speak with Abraham Lincoln, and that meeting came about because of Lucy Danforth, because of all that she knew in town. She was also made the head of the Orphans Asylum during the Civil War in Washington, DC. She became a published author, and also she became a very, very well-known literary person as far as writing about slavery and for women's rights with Susan B. Anthony and the rest of the crowd. They were all part of the same thing. I didn't know she was even part of this town until I found out she was born here. And the reason why I say she was born here is because all the records in town, she was born in 1817. 1816, we sort of broke away a little bit from the reform, Southbridge. A lot of the records were displaced and lost, but I don't think she even had her birth certificate. But the only records we have, public records that says she was born here in town, are her daughter's death certificates of the state and for the city of Boston. And the informant was her mother and father, and her mother gave her father's place of birth and her mother's place of birth as being Sturbridge. And all the rest of the research that you do online, from everything she's talked to, she was born, she always says she was always born in Sturbridge, Massachusetts. So based on that, based on that circular way of discovering her, I wanted to honor her. So I was having, I wanted to have those little hios things that we talk about, the notable people have in town. And I found that there's about 20 of them. And over a period of time, over the next several years, my goal was to have them around on the common and around the area. And that was the first one. We started with Lucy Danforth, and that was to answer your question, Mary. I'm sorry, so winded over that.
No, it's great.
Thank you. She didn't die here, though. She just was born.
She died out in Rochester. In fact, the Rochester Historical Society and their cemetery out there, her grave had been lost on the cemetery. A tree had fallen on it years ago, and they finally had it out there. They knew her. They consider her theirs. And they have banners up in the town, like we have banners here for old Sturbridge religion stuff. They have Frederick Douglass because he's from out there. They have her face and everything like this out there. They honor her in a way. And they sent me their information they have out there. So I figured that we should do something similar for the place that she was born in. She didn't last here too long. She moved quite young. She moved to Lenox, Mass.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anything else from the board on that? Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to place and support Article 13.
I will second that. Do we, all those in favor? Great. All right, so now we're on Article 14, The Town Budget.
And again, under old business, it sort of doubles, covers that you can talk about any line item or vote it, that is, or whatever you all want to do.
Yeah, so how do you want, just want to approach it?
I'd prefer finishing up these articles and then doing line item budget.
Okay, is that, you guys fine with that?
It's fine.
It makes sense to me. All right, so we're going to skip Article 14 for now, and we're going to move to Article 15, which is road construction repairs and maintenance. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $155,000 to the road construction repairs and maintenance account in order to fund the road construction repairs and maintenance of town roads, as determined by DBW Director. All right, do we have any questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
Motion to place and support.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? The ayes have it. Article 16, Public Access Department. To see if the town will vote to appropriate from the PEG Access and Cable Related Fund The Sum of $147,553 Or Take Any Action Relative There Too. Questions or comments?
Motion to place and support.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great. Article 17, Sturridge Tourists Association. To see if the town will vote to transfer and appropriate from the Hotel Motel Special Account To the Sturridge Tourists Association Account The Sum of $213,915 Or to take any action relative to thereto. Do we have any questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to place and support Article 17.
Do we have a second? All those in favor? Article 18, Betterment. To see if the town will vote to transfer and appropriate from the Hotel Motel Special Account To the Betterment Account The Sum of $207,216. 207, 270,207. I can't talk tonight. So, and with the line items that follow. Does anybody want to speak of any of these particular items? Do we have a motion?
Motion to place and support.
All right, all those, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Article 19, Capital Improvement Plan. To see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash and appropriate the sum of $3116,332,990 For the Purpose of Funding the Following Items Including the Payment of All Costs Incidental and Related There Too From the Capital Improvement Plan to be undertaken for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2024. Okay, so any questions or comments on this article broadly, or the line, or the items listed? Do we have a motion?
Motion to place and support.
Yeah.
Do we have a, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Excellent. All right, Ambulance Stabilization Fund. See if the town will raise and appropriate the sum of $60,000 To the Ambulance Stabilization Fund For the Purpose of Reserving Funds For the Future Purchase of an Ambulance Including the Payment of All Costs Incidental and Related There Too. Do we have any questions about this article? Do we have a motion on it?
Make a motion to place and support.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? The ayes have it. Capital Stabilization Fund To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $209,000 To the Capital Stabilization Fund Or Take Any Action Relative There Too. Okay, so does anybody have any questions on this? Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to place and support.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great. Article 22, Fire Vehicle Stabilization Fund. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $100,000 To the Fire Vehicle Stabilization Fund For the Purpose of Reserving Funds For the Future Purpose of Major Fire Apparatus Including the Payment of All Costs Incidental and Related There Too. Do we have any questions? Do we have a motion?
Motion to place and support.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? The ayes have it. Article 23, OPEB Trust Fund. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate The Sum of $100,000 To the Other Post-Employment Benefits Liability Trust Fund Account Or Take Any Action Relative There Too. Questions from the board? Do we have a motion?
Motion to place and support.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? The ayes have it. Article 24, Reserve Fund Transfer. To see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash To the Sum of $1,200,000 To the Stabilization Fund Or Take Any Action Relative There Too. Any questions, comments from the board? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
Motion to place and support Article 24.
I think, yeah, and then, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great. Article 25, Reevaluation and Interim Adjustments. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $30,000 To the Reevaluation and Interim Adjustments Account Or Take Any Action Relative There Too. Any questions or comments from the board? Do we have a motion?
Motion to place and support Article 25.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Article 26, Senior Exemption. To see if the town will vote to increase the exemption amount for senior exemptions pursuant to MGL Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 41(c) From $500 to $1,000 To Take Any Action Relative There Too. Question or comments from the board?
Motion to place and support.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great. Article 27, Resolving, Revolve, strike that, Revolving Funds Spending Limits FY 25. To see if the town will vote to, vote, should be a to, I think, to establish and reestablish the following revolving funds As provided in MGL Chapter 44, Section 53E 1/2 To set the FY 25 spending limits for certain revolving funds as follows. Do we have any question or comments about these? No? All right, hearing none, do we have a motion?
Motion to place and support Article 27.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? The ayes have it. Article 28, To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate Through the fixing and collection of just inequitable prices, excuse me, and rates set by the Select Board Acting as Water Commissioners A Sum of $1,710,964 For the expenses of the Water Department And Take Any Action There Too With Estimated Budget Line Items to Follow Totally in that Same Sum. Any questions or comments from the board? Do we have a motion?
Motion to place and support.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great. Sewer Department, Article 29, Sewer Department. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate Through fixing and collection Of just inequitable prices and rates set by the Select Board Acting as Sewer Commissioners A Sum of $3,492,286 For the expenses of the Sewer Department With Estimated Budget Line Items Following on the article. Any questions or comments on this item from the board? All right, do we have a motion?
Motion to place and support.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? The ayes have it. Article 30, Sewer Debt, strike that, Sewer Project Debt Betterment. To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $125,150 From the FB Reserve for Sewer Betterments To the Big Alum Sewer Debit Account Numbers Listed Therein And then $45,300 From the FB Reserve for Sewer Betterments To the Woodside, Westwood Sewer Debt Account, Debit, Debt Account, excuse me, Account Numbers Listed Therein And for the Purpose of Paying Debt Service Due On These Sewer Projects For FY 25. Any questions or concerns? Do we have a motion?
Motion to place and support.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? The ayes have it. Article 31, Wastewater Treatment Plant Clarifier Coating and Painting. Two-thirds vote required To see if the town will vote to appropriate $300,000 To pay the cost of recoding the wastewater treatment clarifier tank Including preparation of the steel and concrete And replacement and/or repair of any warrant items Including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. Determine whether this amount, this amount shall be raised by borrowing or otherwise, or to take any action relative thereto. Do we have a motion?
Motion to place and support.
Do we have a second?
I do.
Oh, sorry, this is one time when I ask for the question. What's going on?
No, I do want to say I think there will probably be a few questions, Shane, town meeting about all the money For the water and sewer department.
It's probably fair to say.
Okay, so the motion is actually not, like, you're not approving the article as written, you're actually making a motion, just because this is a borrowing article. And then I just wanted to bring to your attention that at the last, at the last Finance Committee meeting, there was a concern regarding how this debt for the next three articles was going to be paid for. So while the warrant hasn't been adjusted yet, we can add language that says something like this, which you can just agree to, and then we can add it if you agree to it, okay? So it'll be, "While any bonds or notes issued pursuant to this vote will constitute general obligation debt of the town, It is expected that such debt will be paid from user rates and charges." And then it would obviously correspond to whether it's a water or sewer article for the rate that it is. But for this article, again, it's, for me, it's implied because we always take out of the water or the sewer ratepayers Unless we specifically vote some other way. But if it makes it more seamless to get it through the Finance Committee, I'm, I've already checked with bond counsel, and that's the language that they suggested that we add to the motion. I just want to throw that out there.
Okay, so you, first of all, you need us to approve the motion, not the, just the warrant article, and second of all, the, you are specifying what you consider the implication, which is that unless stated to the contrary, then it comes from either the water or sewer department users.
Right, but if you want to just simplify things going forward with the Finance Committee, I would just recommend adding that language. And then it's very clear, even though it's clear to me, but if it makes it clearer to everyone else, then it's worth adding the sentence.
Okay, are we, well, I mean, we could reopen when we have the actual type warrant, or we could do it verbally here.
So the warrant, the article is not going to change. This is just your motion.
Your motion, excuse me.
We can just add that onto the motion.
Yeah, okay. You want to hand me the language?
Yeah. How about if I just, so your motion would be everything?
Yeah.
In italics, and then at the end, you would add the sentence that I'll read when you get there. You want to do that?
That's fine.
Okay.
So just so everybody at home is clear. So we're going to make a motion and support that the town appropriates $300,000 To pay the cost of recoding the wastewater treatment clarifier tank Including preparation of the steel and concrete and replacement And, and?
Yep.
Or repair of any warrant items, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. And that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the selectmen Is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to GLC 44, Section 84 Or any other enabling authority And to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore.
While any bonds or notes issued pursuant to this vote will constitute general obligation debt of the town, It is expected that any such debt will be paid from user rates and charges.
Okay, and there's a couple typos in there, Michelle. But the, okay, so do we have a motion to place and support that motion?
Motion to place and support.
Second.
All those in favor? All right, moving to the next motion, Article 32, Prefabricated Office Building for Water Treatment System. Motion that the town appropriates $400,000 To pay the cost of permitting site preparation, including utilities connection Purchase and installation of a prefabricated office trailer For the operation of the water treatment system at 375 Main Street, AKA 20 Water Works Drive Including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. And that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the selectmen Is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to GLC 44, Section 71 Or any other enabling authority And to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore.
Then while any bonds or notes issued pursuant to this vote will constitute general obligation debt of the town, It is expected that any such debt will be paid from user rates and charges.
Okay, do we have any questions about that? Do we have a motion to place and support that motion?
Yes, you.
Thank you.
Motion to place and support Article 32.
Second.
All those in favor? Article 33, Stallion Hill Water Tank Replacement. Two-thirds vote required To see if the town will vote to appropriate $3,300,000 To pay the cost of replacing the Stallion Hill Water Tank Including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. Determine whether this amount shall be raised by borrowing or otherwise, or take any action relative thereto. Any questions or comments?
So I think this one, we may want to discuss that last sentence sort of becomes crucial in this one Because while most of this is very clearly a water ratepayer question, we have considered that this one, we may want to look at a portion of this coming out of the main town debt, if you will, because this tank is one of our largest tanks. It would not need to be so large if it was not also the source of our fire suppression for water. So there is a benefit, we could do a small, if it was simply for ratepayers, we could do a smaller, significantly smaller tank. We could actually take it offline and bypass it if we had to, but we wouldn't want to. I mean, we certainly want to have the tank, but it would not have to be anywhere near the scale that it is If it was not also what we filled our tankers from, basically, and it's used for suppression. So I think philosophically, it's a question for all of you As to whether or not you think there should be some split, any split, no split on this. Either way, it needs to be done. There's no question it needs to be done. The tank is, will be in disrepair in a relatively short order of time. So it is critical, but the question of a split, really, again, philosophically, is one for you. FinCom started to discuss this, but again, it's, it's a board discussion first, I believe, and then obviously FinCom can vote to support that or not.
I mean, do you have a percentage that you're contemplating?
We were looking at 50/50 from the standpoint, again, that it is fire suppression. The other thing is that you have a lot of commercial businesses along there that that tank feeds. And again, those businesses help support the town on a broad basis economically. So we kind of figured 50/50 was a fair one on this.
But we, most of those businesses would be paying their water bill, right?
Yeah, yeah, but we're talking, again, fire suppression and whatnot.
No, no, I get that. I just was saying about the.
Yeah, they pay their water bill, yeah.
Yeah. I don't know what the board thinks.
I personally don't believe in splitting Because then the regular ratepayers will be getting hit double.
I see what you're saying, if you're getting your water served and you're paying additional.
And then now on your taxes.
Okay, Mary Lou Chase, what do you think?
I agree with Mary.
Okay, yeah, I, that makes sense to me. I don't have a strong, I mean, I could, if there was some portion, I understand the logic, but I'm. I don't, I don't have a strong, I mean, I could, if there was some portion, I understand the logic, but I'm fine with that.
I mean, for our, from our stand, standpoint, it, it, it doesn't matter, except for the fact that when we look at water, when we look at rates down the road, we're going to have to incur that debt cost, that's all.
Wow.
And, and that's, you know, we're going to have to incur it somewhere, so.
I mean, I was going to say, so it's a, I, I figured the debt at twenty, a twenty-year payback, which would be realistic for this. It's a dollar, and again, this is all based on right now, so I can't say what's going to happen with water usage and all that. But it's a dollar fifty-eight to the rate, if you a hundred percent comes out of the water users, it's fifty, uh, so I'm sorry, seventy-nine cents at fifty percent. And I get your point regarding the, the rate payers are paying twice, but that fifty percent, if you split it fifty percent, the water user would be paying seventy-nine cents on their rate, and then the general fund would actually be split amongst more people. So I understand, I'm just, I'm just giving you the numbers, so.
Let's say that again, so the, the, you're saying that it's a buck thirty-eight if you put, for all the water users, if you put it on the water.
Buck fifty-eight.
Fifty, okay.
Yep.
So a dollar fifty-eight on every quarterly bill?
That would be the rate.
The rate, okay, so the rate would increase, okay.
By that much.
That, by that much, okay. And what's roughly that as a percentage of the rate?
I didn't do that.
Uh, what's the rate right now?
Oh.
You think I just want to get this?
Yeah, it's in the article, actually. Second, let me go back to the article. It's eight. The rate is eight forty-five per cubic feet, eight dollars and forty-five cents per one hundred cubic feet. So it'd add one fifty-eight to that.
Okay, so that's a pretty substantial increase. The percentage perspective, not a, not an amount. Okay, so you're saying that if the, this amount, which is three million dollars, so one point five million goes, the general population picks up that one point five million, that the rate, um, would drop down, the increase on the eight forty-five would drop from one thirty-eight to?
One fifty-eight to seventy-nine, yeah.
Seventy-nine cents. And, and I guess I'm, maybe I'm just, so, so the idea is, just so I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just retired. But so the, um, so we're going, and then if we, the concern is that later, we're going to be incurring debt servicing as a consequence of, yeah, no, I mean, on the debt part of it again, a second.
Well, it would ju, either way, the debt has to be paid. It's just, it's a policy decision of the board whether you want a hundred percent of this cost, the three point three borne by the water user.
The, the other seventy-nine percent, I think Barbara's point was the other seventy-nine percent is going to come out of everybody, but because it's dispersed over a larger amount, it doesn't quite double-hit the user.
Yeah, but it still, it's still.
But just, I think, well, the point Barbara's just making is it's not a direct apples.
Shane maybe has the answer. I mean, our town is pretty well hooked up to water, especially that area. I just, I just don't think it's fair to the rate payers.
To decrease the rate payers' pay because they're not paying for the whole thing because part of the other time is paying.
Yeah, but they're still paying for part of it, so it's not decreasing their rates.
Well, it probably would for people with very high water.
No.
Right?
It would for everybody.
It would for everyone because you're taking and you're, instead of three point three million being paid back just by the rate payers, now you're saying fifty percent of that cost is going to be paid by everyone. So yes, the, the rate payer is going to pay in their, in their water rate, and they're going to pay in their bill, but the port, the other fifty percent, instead of being. How many water customers?
Eighteen hundred.
Okay, so instead of eighteen hundred people who are, you know, residents or businesses paying fifty percent of the cost, it's going to be amongst.
Much larger. No, I get it. So the second half, at the second half, becomes a less amount of money because it's diffuse over seven thousand odd people versus one thirteen hundred people. So what's the, I guess the question is, so it's the rate, so I understand that the doll, the rate goes up seventy-eight cents if we do that. What I don't get, and perhaps, is what the actual impact on the, the per household is on the rest of the town, and then what the impact is to Mary's point, the people that are already paying the bill. Because I don't, without sort of seeing that, it's sort of empirical.
Yeah, so, it's not a debt exclusion, so fifty percent in the first year, again, based on estimated rates, but I'm trying to be hot, the worst higher than what I would hope to get. The, the general fund would have to pay in year one, a hundred and fifty-five thousand, nine twenty-five. So technically, there's no additional cost because it's just going to be built in as part of our budget.
We have to find that hundred fifty-five thousand.
Okay, and where does, and on the seventy-eight, so the, the, on the increase in the rate payer at the lower rate, what are they paying per annum?
That's based on their water usage.
I, no, but, but I kind of, but the ballpark, there's a, a way to come up with a ballpark on it, because that would sort of be the, even if it's just on what we did this year. You know, because I would think.
So sixty-four dollars? I think so, time for the, for the year.
So sixty-four dollars, and it's a hundred and fifty thousand is the initial hit on everybody.
Hundred, yeah.
Yeah, I probably need to look up the number. It's in a more laid-out fashion to.
Well, right, so the hundred fifty thousand basically is something we will have to absorb in our budget. It's not something you're going to point to a number on a household. What they would still then be paying if they were a user and a resident of this type, it's split, let's say. As a user, they're going to see an increase of seventy-nine cents per cubic foot, about ten, just under a ten percent increase for that. And, and everybody else is going to probably not see any cost out of pocket. The question is, can we weather and how will we weather a hundred fifty thousand in our budget? The flip side is, we don't worry about weathering the other hundred fifty thousand in the budget, and the rate payer pays a hundred, a dollar fifty-eight more per cubic foot.
Okay.
So it's.
But that's going to still end up costing, but Barbara's kind of, that's still going to cost the rate payer more money if paying the full, taking the whole debt load costs the rate payer more money than splitting it up with the fifty percent around the, so, and so by spreading the pain out a little.
It's proportionally less.
It's proportionally less, and there's fire service involved, so there's, there is that.
Again, policy decision, if, if that's what the board feels.
Yeah, that would be.
Right, right, but, right, and I, and I think that, you know, that is, I think there's going to be a lot of questions by the finance committee regarding whether or not it should be split, and, because it already started getting a little bit heated at our, at the last FinCom meeting, and I asked them to, like, wait for the board to have a discussion.
We need a board discussion.
Because it didn't.
We weren't comfortable answering any sort of philosophical questions.
Oh, and I sunned in the bus.
Well, I just, I think we were.
Not knowing what you're going to do, it might be irrelevant.
We don't, we only set policy when it gets the heat off of you guys.
We, we put it out there, no, we were going to take the heat.
We keep emphasizing fire suppression, but we won't totally lose fire suppression if something happens, will we?
You will have it for a very limited part of your time, very limited, so.
Yeah, just like some of.
So I, I will say that, so it, there's different ways of looking at it, right? There's different ways of looking at all of these things. We support a school system as a whole community because it's for the benefit of the whole community. We support a police station, whether you use it or not, you support it, right? Because it's for the benefit of the whole community. Having a fire system, a, a system that can support fire suppression, and that you can connect to the hydrants, and it works that way, and it's designed that way, there is a benefit for the community. And I understand that it's hard to put a number on what that benefit is, but it is a benefit for the whole community. You wouldn't have a fire department like we have if you didn't have hydrants to hook up to. You know, that's, yes, we have places in town, and, you know, I live in a town that doesn't have any fire hydrants, but there, there's other methods, but there's a benefit to the community in not just, and we get it as a community in better rates because we get better insurance rates. So it is a market benefit. There isn't a way to put a good number on how much water, you know, we use every year in fire suppression activities or fire training activities or, or any of those things. So we don't pay when the hydrant gets opened up and the water goes out for the hydrant, right? There's no mechanism that we go out and we bill somebody for that water. So there's no revenue collected for that water, um, which is a minor thing because we don't have, thank goodness, we don't have fires every day. We're not doing these activities every day, but when we need it, we have it and it's available. And this tank is a very large tank, it gives us really good fire ratings. It's made it so that when we have had fires in this community, I haven't been here, but I've been around, so I know, that we haven't had any problems with supply of the water. And that's really credit to having that addition, having the capacity for that. There are places in neighboring towns that they cannot, they do connect, but they have very limited capacity. They don't have fire-rated water systems in your neighboring town.
So.
Very different.
No, I think, I think we appreciate, I'm just about the number, so, because that, that's still like, this is, it's, it's all, from a policy perspective, it, it's the, I still am not, and, and maybe I will need these numbers, but I understand the, I think I understand the rate part of it. I don't under, I don't really have a conception of the cost on the other side of it, because, you know, I do everything in Excel now, and I can't, but the, uh, the, but the, um, the other part of it is, is how much of this, um, it, uh, how much of the use off of the station is residential versus commercial? Do we have any sense, ballpark?
So the whole system is all one, so we, yeah, I mean, I could tell you, we can tell you how many is commercial versus residential, but.
No, but I get it, it's all.
It's one system, we don't have different zones, so.
You can't isolate it that way, that makes sense.
The other thing I would throw out there is if there's a question of even the ratio, nothing says fifty-fifty is, you know, if, if, let's say the board says, I think that's too much or not enough. I mean, we use that saying, okay, that size tank, based on how, could we cut the tank in half if we didn't do fire suppression? We probably could make the tank maybe fifty percent, therefore fifty-fifty seem fair. However, the, the board could also look at it and say, look, we still think it's a majority water, but maybe it's seventy-five, twenty-five. I mean, we put a number out there that we just felt as a recommendation if this was going to be considered. And again, to the point that, that Jamie's bringing up, there's not going to be a direct cost out-of-pocket increase on a non-water user who is a town resident. Their taxes will absorb, what they're already paying in taxes will absorb that. It's not like we're going to be asking for an override to cover that. It just means from a budgetary standpoint, when we look at what we have to spend money on, that is going to be a consideration.
So are we, are we going, sorry?
No, but we'll be asking the rate payers.
Well, is that true, though? Will this cost, there's, what they're, I think that they're saying, though, is that, and maybe I'm wrong, they're saying that by the town taking one and a half, the town's in for a buck fifty anyways, and then by taking one and a half, uh, paying the one and a half million dollars per year in the debt servicing over how many years?
Twenty.
Twenty. And so we're, what is that, what is twenty years of one point five per year?
What's one fifty, the higher, the first year is one fifty-five.
Yeah, but then after that, which.
It just keeps going down as the principal goes down.
Okay, so it'll just.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so the, um, so by doing that, you're confident that the rate payer ends up paying less because they're, because of how spread out it is?
Yeah, because it's divided by more people, yeah.
So in that, so that seems better for the rate payer, though, Mary, is, because it's, because by.
Well, it's, it might be better, but it's not ideal. I mean, ideal is rate payers pay.
Sure.
They shouldn't have to pay more.
Well, I think they're, either the rate payers are paying for the whole thing.
Right.
If the rate payers are paying the full three million, they're paying a, I don't know if it's a lot more, or.
Yeah.
It says, double?
Ah, double.
So it'll end up costing them double, whereas if we spread out the pain over the remaining three quarters of the town, over the twenty-year amirization, it will, um, it's not noticeable on the large, not noticeable is a little strong, but it's not a huge cost in the larger budget, whereas it would be a significant, it'd be almost a two dollar, a dollar sixty increase on, for the.
So it's about twenty percent increase, if I'm doing my math right, it's about twenty percent increase of three million all on the rate payer. It's going to see a twenty percent increase in their rate. If we split it, the rate payer sees a ten percent increase in their rate approximately. Nobody else sees an increase in anything else, the rate payer or non-rate payer, we just have to find it in our budget.
Right.
Well, I mean, yeah, which all goes back.
I mean, which effectively does cost the taxpayer, if they, no, 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 it does cost the taxpayer because if I have to cut a service to do it.
But relative to the scale, relative to the number of years and the cash that we're talking about, it's relatively discreet compared to the larger budget, because you're talking about cascading a hundred and fifty thousand dollars over a twenty-year period versus a forty-one million dollar.
I mean, from a budgeting standpoint, it's easy, it's easier to just put it on the rate payer, frankly, than us trying to find a hundred fifty-five thousand in our budget. However, again, it comes back to a policy decision, do you want us to find that one fifty-five and put ten percent on the rate payer? Or, I mean, and I'm not trying to be flip about it, that's like, that's just really, I think, the clearest way to look at it.
I think, I mean, from a, just a numbers perspective, if you're just running it as a, you know, I hate when people compare government to business, because.
For service workers.
It's not the same thing, but if you're just looking at it from an operational perspective, it does, the fifty-fifty split makes a lot more sense because you're helping the, the, the user who will see the most immediate impact on their, really, and mostly the residential unit service, who I'm concerned about.
Yeah, but there's also the business.
Yeah, but la, larger businesses probably won't care as much because it's an operational cost. Smaller businesses, residential is the people that will, you know, like, they're, big businesses are going to be like, yeah, it's right now.
But your local restaurant, let's say, is going to see a twenty percent increase on the water rate.
And the justification for the non-rate payer is we have the fire suppression system in town, so that's what we're using.
Yeah, and we're not stick, and we're not putting, and we're not putting it too much pressure on people in water and sewer for relative.
And again, that's at a fifty-fifty split, if the board said, or the will of the board is a seventy-five, twenty-five, that, again, the number isn't hard and fast, it's.
I think fifty-fifty's fine, it's, for me, I, I'm comfortable with it now that I understand it. I don't know what the rest of you guys think.
No, I'm still.
You're still conservative.
Even though I understand it.
Yeah, no, I, I get it, it's like, uh, you know, these things are complicated when you have a dedicated service group in it, and you know.
Don't forget, the rates usually go up anyways.
That's true, but the, um, but, you know, it's, but it's still controlling, and so, well, I think I'm comfortable with the fifty-fifty split. I, what are you guys thinking? We can also table it till Mary's here, too.
Does it have to be done by next meeting, or can we table it till Mary's?
Um, we, we would have to have a special to, to vote, yeah.
Never mind.
Or you can move it without a vote and, and we could amend, can they vote after and we amend it on the floor?
We'd have to make a.
I think you'd have to make a, yeah.
Okay, so we have to make a decision now.
We have to have it closed before.
Well, I mean, the issue's going to come, this finance, finance committee's going to want to know.
Yeah.
What the policy decision is for them to support, or, and they'll probably, I mean, if you, if you move forward with the article as is, they're potentially going to have a substitute motion.
Okay, um, so I think that, um, I'm comfortable making a motion to place and support the motion that the town appropriates three million, three hundred thousand dol, uh, strike that, yeah, three hundred third, you still have to appropriate the three million, three hundred thousand dollars with the language contained therein. But I would advocate for a split of fifty-fifty between the rate payers and the larger population.
Yeah, I would just take that language that we said rate payers before, and then add on that it would be split fifty, fifty-fifty.
And so I'll add that to my motion now, just as we did. And so with that, does anybody have a second?
All second.
And all those in favor? Those against? That's a weird one.
It is, it is.
All right, Article thirty-four, uh, saying, what's that?
Um, well, the word in the title, it's building.
No.
Yeah, I have, I have. Yeah, I have, I have.
What are we not paying for spell checking this town?
Spell check doesn't make it.
We spent 20 million.
Trial was all right.
Yeah, but our license is, yeah, at least if it's a real word, but all right. St. Anne's Tank Sampling Control Building, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate from the Water and Reserve Fund balance, the sum of 320,000, 300, that's just a dollar there. There, 320,000 to pay the cost of engineering and construction of a building at the St. Anne Water Tank for sampling and control, including the payment of all costs. Any questions from the board? Anyway, we have a motion?
Motion to place and support.
Wait a second.
I must have been tired.
Second. All those in favor? Yeah, I have it. Article 35, Stormwater MS4 Compliance, uh, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash to the sum of $100,000 to pay for all activities associated with and required by state regarding compliance in the EPA Stormwater MS4 permit or take any other action relative thereto. Um, do we have any questions or comments about this one? Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to place and support Article 35.
Second.
Do you have, uh, all those in favor? Article 36, Amendment of the Zoning Bylaw, Article 11, Accessory Dwelling Units, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning by law, Article 11, Accessory Dwelling Units, uh, uh, Accessory Dwelling Unit Standard C by inserting the underlying language and deleting the strikethrough language as follows. Only one accessory unit shall be created, this accessory unit shall be either within the single-family dwelling, within an addition to the existing dwelling, or within an accessory structure. Okay, so basically that, that's saying the addition of an addition to a house?
Yeah, this is pretty much cleanup language, I think.
I didn't, I didn't know if we could group all the zoning together.
So I believe they were all cleanup language.
Yeah. So it's, it's, it's just, so they're not changing what the intent is, it's just cleaning up inconsistent langu, um, incondi, I'm sorry, inconsistent terms and then typographical errors for all of the addition, the next several articles.
There was nothing substantive.
Right.
Obviously planning did vote these.
Yeah. Um, okay, uh, does anybody have anything strong to say about the zoning terms?
No, motion to place and support.
Article 36 to.
Forty-two.
Well, forty-two's, yeah, forty-two. Um, all right, uh, do we have a second?
I'll have a second.
All those in favor? Yeah, I have it. Okay.
Take us back to the budget before you close. Yep.
All right. So occasionally I gotta go doing this thing. All right.
C1.
What's that?
C1.
C1.
Trying to get you there.
I know, right? All right. So. So you have, I'm just gonna have to read through these right straight down on each page.
Maybe you could just read the grand total of the departments unless there's questions?
Well, yeah, I think what we've done is the department head salary and then the total salary.
Department head salary. Yeah, I think that's what I did.
You weren't on the board.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't, when I did it, it was strange.
Yeah, the year, the year we left off, I've been hitting salaries, people were up in arms.
Okay.
They like to know.
So we want to do the, just the, so the totals on selectmen recommended on FY '25, and I'm going to read the, uh, personnel costs, like, well, I'll just read the department head salaries.
Yeah, it doesn't have a department head.
Yeah, no, if they don't have it, I'm just skipping it. All right, uh, Department Board of Selectmen, total for, uh, recommended FY '20, '25, 3,600. Um, do we have any question or comments?
We can just.
Expensive. We can just say old.
Yeah, okay, I'm going to send a blast. If anybody has an issue, just yell out old, okay?
Good.
Um, all right, town, T, Town Administrator, uh, salaries 187,994, total 331,012. Uh, Finance Committee, uh, total 7,882. Um, Town Accountant, Department Head Salaries 101, uh, 100,1310, total, uh, 123,530. Board of Assessors, Department Head Salaries 104,989, uh, Board of Assessors total 182,509. Uh, Finance Director, 135,584, she's trouble. Uh, total 379,950. Um, Town Council, uh, total 70,000. Uh, Information Technology Department Head, 89,544, total 331,019. Town Clerk, uh, Department Head Salary, 89,544, Town Clerk total 136,700. Elections and Registration, uh, total 44,980. Conservation Commission, Department Head Salary, 84,403. Uh, Conservation Commission total 135,643. Town Planner, 119, Department Head Salary, 119,972, total, uh, 236,761. Zoning Board of Appeals, total 590. Economic Development, uh, total 38,229. Facilities, Department Head Salaries 84,403, total 163,979. Town Hall, uh, 36,550. Uh, Center Office Building, total 34,900. Senior Center Building, uh, 26,650. Joshua Hyde Library Building, 23,200. Safety Complex, 95,815. Nursery School, 5,400. April Field Road, zero. And it shows. Um, Department, Police, uh, Department Head Salaries 172,656, 656, total 3,991,275. Fire, uh, Department Head, 138,420. Fire total, 2,179,546. Building Inspector, Department Head Salary, 103,843, total 160,260. Sealer of Weight and Measures, total 13,900. Uh, Inspectors, Electrical and Plumbing, uh, 55,778. Tree Warden, total 39,634. Uh, Burgess Elementary, uh, total, strike that, uh, Burgess Elementary, 13,895,627. Uh, Tantasca Town Share, uh, 8,414,115. Charter School Transportation, 5,000. Okay, um, Department of Public Works, Department Head Salaries 97,755. Department Public Works total 1,300,58, uh, 1358079. Town Road Maintenance, 8,000. Snow and Ice Removal, 241,661. Landfill Recycling Center, total 427,638. Board of Health, Department Head Salaries 92,187, total 140,957. Community Health, 5,000. Inspection, Inspection and Testing, 52,284. Uh, Council on Aging, Department Head Salary, 84,403. Counseling, Council on Aging, total 169,257. Veteran Services, 79,128. Joshua Hyde Library Operations, Department Head Salaries 108,180, total 612,000, 612,629. Recreation, 76,476 for the Department Head Salary, total 155,536. Uh, Trails Committee, 500, total. Historical Commission, 4,150, total. Debt Service, um, well, start, let me list them. Debt Service Principal, Elementary School, 915, uh, 915, uh, 915,000. Town Hall, 160,000. Senior Center, 575,000. Total 1,650,000.
Jamie, if I could just mention that the amount for the senior center is just an estimate at this point. Um, we actually had a ratings call today with Standards and Poor, which I thought went really well. Um, we will be, um, selling bonds mid-May, and so we'll have an adjusted number for town meeting, hopefully downward, but.
Great, yeah.
I know.
Excellent, thanks. Uh, and as good as S and B, I hate movies. Uh, Debt Service Interest, uh, 723,296. And that's going line item of Burgess Elementary School, 184,664. Town Hall, 28,882. Senior Center, 509,750. Uh, and then the total is that 725. All right, and then. Okay, these are unclassified, um, so let's just go through them. Group Insurance, 2 million, 2121000. Unemployment, 27,000. Uh, Whistler Retirement System, 2,222,202. Medicare Tax, 301,000. Streetlights, 60,000. Energy Consulting, 4,000. Engineering Professional Services, 20,000. Town Audit, 35,500. School Audit, zero. OPEB Study, 2,000. Legal Fees, 7,500. Tax Title, 5,000. Town Report, 38, 3,800. Insurance Bank Blanket, 480,000. Insurance Deductible, 5,000. Reserve Fund, 195,000. Uh, Student Activity, 5,000. Future Wage Obligation, zero. Total Expensive, 5,494, and 5,494 and 2,000. Um, total. All right, Central Purchasing, um, the total is 42 million, no, that's the total budget. Um, the central purchasing total, I was like, whoa, um, the central purchasing is total is.
Get new cars.
The central purchasing total is 40, 470,750. And that is consists of telephone, 18,000. Postage, 30,000. Gasoline, 230,000. Water and Sewer, 25,000. Copiers, 6,500. Slave Roof Maintenance Plan, zero. Fleet Vehicles, zero. Window clean, Window Cleaning, 5,000. Exterior TH dash COB, zero. EZ Pass, 750, electricity, electricity, 140,000. Trash Removal Recycling, 10,500. Fire Extinguishers, 5,000. And then that's that total of 47750. With, and then we get to the budget grand total, it is 42,765,398. And that's pretty much it, right? These are the summaries. Great.
So that's Article, you want to, yeah, put it back to an Article 15?
It's 14, I believe. Was it 14 or 15?
14.
Used to be eight for a long time.
That's a lot of CPC.
A lot of CPC.
All right, Article 14. Um, we didn't have any holds on there, so, uh, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of money as may be necessary to pay the town charges for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2024, and vote to fix salary in compensation of all elected officials in accordance with the revision of the MGL, Chapter 41, Section 108, effective July 1st, 2024.
Motion to place and support. Second.
All those in favor? There you go, Barbara.
Thank you all. Thank you all for the support on that.
Oh, no problem.
Appreciate it. Thanks, ladies.
Thank you.
Um, all right, we have another, more meeting, I guess.
We still have stuff. We still have stuff. You guys can escape.
Uh, no, Barbara has to stay for everything.
Yeah, we're going to ask you, just because, just because.
Um, according to my agenda, I got.
You love her.
I'm stealing yours. Um, all right, so.
Robin, oh.
Okay, sir.
Yes.
Sorry.
I just have a question on the, um, detail budget.
Yep.
Police, D23.
D23, yep.
Should we close the, the warrant first or is this about that?
She could put on her old business.
Yeah.
Because I left it, your old business.
Okay, just, just keep going, Mary, just doesn't matter.
Well, it's just a question on the, um.
What page, Mary?
D23.
D23.
The, uh, Department Head Salary. It's only a penny's difference between what was requested.
That's probably a rounding. I, I would imagine that it was either a typo when it got brought across or, or a rounding. Is it one dollar difference there? It could have been a rounding.
You are stingy, Robin.
Yeah, I'm knocking off, I almost lost an apple. I will, I will confirm that it's not a typo, it may.
Because you, uh, put it down to.
Yeah, technically he lost the dollar, so, and the budget got voted a dollar less, so I will, I will maybe personally give him a dollar, buy him a half a cup of coffee, not even a whole cup. I'll buy him a half of a Dunkin'. I think at McDonald's I can get for 99 cents, so.
At Cumberland, right?
At Cumbies. I think that probably was, what happened was it was probably a rounding.
Round it down?
Yeah. Listen, I worry about taxpayer dollars every, and I say I worry about every dollar.
Okay, um, so I think.
So I have no other old business.
Do you have any other?
No, I just.
Anything else on the warrant before we close, guys? Um, all right, so do we have?
Motion to close the warrant for the annual town meeting.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Are you all comfortable with the, uh, spellings and the summary boxes from CPC being added and not reopening or closing? So minor substantive change, you know, non-substantive.
Yeah, I mean, well, I mean, we're probably.
Scripter type.
Yeah, I mean, fixing to make it logical and if we have to reopen this.
If there's something that looks substantive or a summary box I think you need to see, I'll let you know.
I bet dollars to no one else we will somehow reopen this.
They probably.
Yep.
So they're making the effort to.
All right, so old business, we had budget discussions, which, and the votes that were taken, so I can go through that unless anybody has anything else. Uh, Mary, do you have any other old business?
Hmm, oh, I had asked last time about the exit interview for Officer Joe Beldorian.
Oh, I can, I, I will get that too.
Yeah, you said you were going to ask. Not the chairman.
I don't know if they fill out, if everybody fills out the formal form, but there is always an exit interview and the, there's, I think in, um, some cases, the reasons are somewhat personal.
Yeah.
And.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that one's in our policy book.
Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense. Um, anyone else, Mary?
No.
Chase, any?
No, thank you.
No.
Uh, I have, I have, on your evaluation, Robin, I, I have all of the, uh, stuff, everybody on the board now, so I can go all together. Feedback, so I suspect it'll probably be on the next, get my, because Mary just hasn't handed it in.
The school teacher is.
She still hasn't.
No, I'm talking about you.
She's a school teacher. I was a joke, I bet. I bet I was the first one.
How many times did you say to somebody in your life, you? How many times did you say to somebody in your life, you haven't turned it in yet?
I got you on that one, though.
I know, you're in a crazy rock.
Obviously being sarcastic.
Had me confused.
I got you so bad, you blame Mary Dowling. All right, so then moving on, new business, Mary Lou.
Nothing.
Chase?
Nothing.
Nothing?
Nothing for me either.
Except I'm gonna tell you mobile. Gonna tell you mobile.
She's more trouble than I am. But the correspondence.
We have three items, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Department of Telecommunications and Cable, the Department of Environmental Protection, and the Opakam Land Trust.
Great.
The, um, may.
Of course, yeah.
The Opakam ones, have they been gotten back, too?
Yes, I believe Brandon Goodwin is in touch with them, and he and I will be meeting this week to discuss further.
I appreciate them following up, honestly. Okay, then we're on to approval of minutes, so we have minutes from, we will not be able to vote on the, wait, we can, I guess we can do two votes, it's still a majority. Well, we don't know, we don't have a quote.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can, we can vote on two, yeah. All right, so we can't vote on the, until Mary's here, we can't vote on the February 21st meeting minutes. Let's go to the August 7th meeting minutes. Does anybody have any comments? Anything else?
They were clear. And make a motion to approve the minutes of August 7th, 2023, as written.
Second. All those in favor? The ayes have them. Going to the August 1st, 2024 minutes.
April 1st, right?
April 4th. April 4th.
There's a typo under the show cause hearing in the second line. He described what is happening.
It should be happening. Unless they said happening.
You might have.
It was around Easter.
Yeah.
Hopping happened.
The show cause.
That joke, yeah.
You liked it.
I did, I. We're getting silly now.
We got it, hopping.
Yeah.
Hopping right them on.
Hopping mad.
Yeah, anything else, guys?
That's the only thing I see.
Motion to approve minutes.
I have a second. All those in favor? The ayes have it. And then we are moving to Citizens Forum, nobody here at a forum. All right.
On, um, correspondence. We got an email from a gentleman, what's his name, head of the Charter Study Committee.
I don't think I got an email from, from.
Mr. Menard?
From Larry?
Jim?
Is it the library?
No, no, no. Oh, I'm sorry, not the Charter Study, but Spectrum.
Oh, yeah, 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 Mr. Menard, Al Menard. Yep, so he's been trying to get in touch with them, they finally got in touch, they changed some management over there. Our, I will say Mr. Menard and the, in our Charter Review, in our, now you got me calling it Charter. And our Cable Review Committee are doing an absolute bang-up job for volunteer group, they really are on top of it. So they got a little delayed because Spectrum had some management changes, and I don't think anybody let them know.
Well, I do give them credit because I know anyone that works with them has not had luck. And I doubt very much that they're gonna have luck with this new change.
But I can tell you, if anybody is, this gentleman that's running our volunteer group is, is, he's, he's pretty scrappy. He will do what he has to do to.
Well, you know, it's just identifying who exists there and it's half the.
That's, that's half the battle.
So, all right, anything else in that?
No.
Mary Lou, Chase, anything else? All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, and I give it to Chase by hair.
Chase wins by nose.
I'll raise two hands to that one.